I'll be the Lord and come on down to brought for you.
We're the angels, the Lord of the United States of America, and the true religion for which the saints, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every key to heaven's throne.
Al Rowe?
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Weaver. Counselor Broughton?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Counselor Barton?
Here.
Mayor Lovett?
Here.
We have a warrant to do business.
Approve the minutes of the October 12th meeting.
Motion approved minutes of October 12th regular meeting.
Motion by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Broughton to approve the minutes of the October 12th of a regular meeting. Is there any discussion or any changes to be made? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. I see Reverend Matthews in the crowd. He's been a bit tardy and lately we hadn't seen him. I'm glad to see you here today.
Thanks, sir.
Good to see you again. Next item is a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing to order. It's to consider the demolition of the West Wing of the Bruton Heights Shopping Center. And I will call on our... you have.
Mayor and Counselor, western section of 1023 Douglas Avenue, also down to Bruton Heights Shopping Center to most of us, was inspected. Those inspected were the State of Alabama Fire Marshal Mike Tally, the City of Bruton Fire Chief Jeff Salter, and former City of Bruton building official, Lawton Shipp. Numerous fire code violations were discovered from the inspection. The violations included inadequate fire system maintenance, missing and improperly installed fire extinguishers, improper storage of combustible materials, improper working space due to code, open electrical junctions and splices, no building address identifying numbers, and such. Now that was bad enough in and of itself. There was another violation that was discovered during inspection that exacerbated and greatly worsens by magnification the situation. The worst discovery was the finding of an unstable and collapsed in place's roof structure that has allowed water leakage in the building resulting in mold throughout. To frame this and put it in a good context for you, Chief Jeffrey Salter assessed that fact with the following statement: "The mold in every separated space is the worst I have seen in any building in my career. The entire building roof structure is completely unstable and nor has collapsed in ninety percent of the building space." The outcome from the inspection was the State of Alabama Fire Marshal Mike Tally shut the facility down. Due to its unfit nature, it could not be utilized, it could not be occupied. Currently, the structure of 1023 Douglas Avenue was vacant and cannot be occupied due to fire, health, safety, and structural concerns. Based on this determination, the structure is deemed to be a dangerous nuisance. On September 22nd, notice by certified mill was sent to the owners informing them they had forty-five days to repair or demolish the structure. I received that notification and they received the letter on September the 29th. As code allows, they can file a written request to appear before the governing body of the City of Bruton. Code allowed that, so on October the 6th, I received a written request from them that they would appear before you to give explanation today. Such time, the date and time for appearing was given, and that's today at this time. The structure of attention is located in a central part of our city, and it once held some thriving businesses, and had some very successful businesses up until recently, but it just simply became unfit for occupation and businesses could no longer stand to operate there. I want to acknowledge that this hearing is not intended to create unpleasantness or anxiety for anybody, but I believe that we all share in common an interest in the beauty and the well-being of our city. Therefore, this has to be addressed, and following the procedures of code, we come here today to bring this to your attention. So as best as I can articulate, that's the city's position at this point, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And I call on Richard Holman.
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you looking at me here. I'll tell you a little bit about me. I'm Richard Holman, I'm from Montgomery, Alabama. I manage one of their properties, East El Mall, over seventy retail stores, and we do retail sales over sixty million dollars. I will tell you that I just got to sign this property in the last two weeks to come down here and see it. I did come down to Bruton a couple of weeks ago with the hurricane, Sally come through, took some pictures, see some damage that was done, but I myself also seen that building to be needing some real serious help. So I have been in contact with our home office incorporated. They've asked me to come down here, and guys, what I'd like to say is this, is that, one, I apologize for what it looks. It looks bad to me. Two, I think there's a way to fix this and us work together, and us work with the City of Bruton, and repair this building and get it back up to code, whether it is at the end of the day to take it away, or at the end of the day to meet with economic development team down here and see what we can do and what ideas maybe the City of Bruton has for the property. Also think that maybe you could bring in some businesses. So I'll go back, I've been, our company that I went down and bought the mall I'm with right now in January, they paid twenty-four million dollars for the mall. They have over a billion dollars in asset real estate holdings. I think the only reason this property has been neglected is because nobody's been out here looking at the property. And until you kind of physically see it, you don't understand how it looks. So I think there's value there. When I was taking over East El Mall in Montgomery, the property had gone down. We had twenty-eight vacant stores, and in the last two years, we worked out only four vacant stores, and gone from revenue of thirty-eight million to sixty million dollars in over a year and a half period of time. I don't say that because that's anything special, but I say that because there's no way to take a property and make the property valuable until you see the value of the property. Well, number one, it's just right across the street from here. It is kind of an eyesore. So what I'd like to do today, if possible, and I, you know, I communicated corporate, and I communicated, and I had the privilege to speak with Mayor Lovett, and I appreciate that. You know, what I'd like, if you can give me some time, really, due to COVID, due to the end of the year, getting contractors to do things. Now, I have priced out here just a few bids in the very beginning in the last four or five days. I'm getting prices of a quarter of a million dollars to tear down the building. I'm getting a price of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to repair the roof. I'm getting, you know, I had a sprinkler system company come down here and bring a sprinkler last week. He thinks the sprinkler heads and the sprinkler system can be fixed. I think the building can be brought back up to standard, and we can bring some good tenants in that building and make that place look good. I think the parking lot needs repaving, reselling, restricted. To me, it does. But I'm here today on behalf of Navo Realty Company to ask for an extension to give me some time to look at this property, to get some bids out there. I was going to bring in a container tomorrow to move all that clothing that's in space two oh four out there. But as you know, there's a tropical storm coming up from the Gulf that's going to come through here Thursday, and really, I'll have it come next week, sit it out there. I'll send my crew down from East El Mall down here, and we'll clean that space two oh four out. But again, I'll get some contractors down here, and let me, if I can, with your permission, take some time to see what it's really going to take. The bid I got from somebody in Florida who gave me four million dollars to say, well, I'll tear down the building, twenty-six thousand dollars to remove the clothing out there. Guys, I can bring four employees from my mall down here and set a container out there and even get out myself for a couple thousand dollars. And I'm not saying that, but it don't cost that much to fix that building, get that building back up to par. So if I, with your permission and the opportunity, I think there's great value. I love the City of Bruton, I'm in Alabama, born and raised, and I don't want to see nothing but this state and this place be nothing but a better place. So if it's possible, if I could get an extension today, and I don't have an answer, but I know we're getting here at the end of the year, I'll at least have sixty days and maybe in the next thirty, sixty days, with economic development, and maybe get some ideas of what people, that happened in that building, happened in that building over there. There's some value there, and I don't think just tearing it down is the value. I'd like to build some apartments there. You know, you might do half apartments and you could do half retail. But I think until we can make a decision, I've got to come down a few more times and spend some time with some people here and figure out what it's going to take to make it viable again. And that's what I bring for you today.
Thank you, Richard. I appreciate it. So, you can have a second. So what I'm hearing, if I'm incorrect, you can tell me that you've got a plan to do some temporary cleanup and needing about sixty days to come up with a plan for us. So I call on Steve Uhouse to address what he's thinking is after hearing that.
Mayor and Counselor, it didn't get that way overnight. Took some time for it to get to the point that it is now. And I'm aware that it's going to take some time to turn it around. I appreciate Richard Holman coming today. I'm glad to know that we do have the heir of Navdar at this point, the only company. It reminds me of our concern, and I appreciate you coming today in the interest that you've expressed. Mayor, I sure want the city to be able to see some tangible evidence of interest and commitment from them, but I know it's going to take a bit of time. Given the time of the year that we're at, Thanksgiving's coming and Christmas, my estimation would be the wisest thing to do would be to have them to come back and report to this council, the first council meeting of December, which I believe is December the 14th, and at that time, see where their progress is, see what kind of commitments they're willing to make with the City of Bruton to get this thing moving forward. Maybe give us a timeline as to when we can expect a suitable resolution. That's not the best idea that I can come up with. It's going to take a little bit of time, but I'm willing to give them a little bit more time now that they've indicated.
Steve, yes, because it's Christmas time, would you be okay with just say the first meeting in January?
First meeting in January, you can give them an abundance of time. They all will be able to come back with a concrete firm plan by then, either we're going to fix it or they'll take this back to us.
Okay.
You know, I should really like the question, so the public would know, we're talking about what old Sears used to be, those dollar stores.
The whole West Wing.
Yeah. Was it like the northeast, east or south? Say, maybe, because the public doesn't understand what it was actually talking about. We're talking about the West Wing.
The whole west section from what used to be Sears, Bill's Dog, all the way up.
Talking about the piece that I don't know.
Yes, sir.
All right. So if we're, wanted to follow what Steve is asking, I need a motion to ask Richard Holman's company to come back to first meeting in January with a plan.
Mayor, I motion that we will allow the gentleman to come back to first meeting in January and proceed from there.
Motion by Counselor Barton, seconded by Counselor Watson to approve the extension of time for Navdar to come back with a plan and proposal to the city for reformation of the derelict property. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the proposal is approved.
Public hearing is closed. Richard, you're welcome to stay here the rest of the afternoon. I know you got to drive to Montgomery. You're also welcome to drive back to Montgomery.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you in January. I'll be talking to you before.
Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Witch is Right. I can't think of a better witch than Mayor Lovett.
I was told to wear my mask, but I was a little nervous because I don't really wear masks.
I understand. It's easier for you to say, we do let people take their mask off and talk.
Okay. I'm Meredith Buck, and we have, just through Facebook, a few of us have decided that we would throw together a Witch's Ride for Halloween. They do this in Fairhope, and in Montgomery, they've done it on 38 and San Rosa Beach, they do it in various places in Birmingham. And there was a video on Facebook, and we just, a few of us said, well, we kind of want to do something like this. So I started a Facebook page, and within two days, we had a hundred and ten members and sixty-five committed riders, and I thought I was going to be lucky if I had thirty. And now, some of them are a little concerned about riding a bike due to their bad or their athletic endurance, and that they want to participate. It's also for charitable cause, and we are, this year, raising money for an eleven-year-old girl who has been diagnosed with leukemia and is going through chemo right now. And we're going to give all our fees, which is a ten-dollar entry fee, not much, but to her family to help support with their medical bills. But my concern is our safety, now that we have so many riders and some that want to do a couple golf carts, so riding down the sidewalks. Our route is, or was, starting at the high school, we're going to gather there, and then, I should know the roads, next to the tennis courts and get onto Bevel that way. But in order, if we're able to get some roads blocked off, we are willing to change our route for anything. We would love for kids to come out, and if all this is approved, then we will get some flowers out high tomorrow to the elementary school and some of the preschools, and to let their parents go to bring them out.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. What day are you talking about doing this?
Well, we were talking about Thursday, and then we have this hurricane coming, and kind of talking.
That's just getting ordinary now, so.
I told this man, he was saying it was supposed to come through Wednesday, early morning, Thursday, hopefully it would be dried up, hopefully it won't be that bad of a storm. If it is, we just don't have to cancel it, and then we'll have to decide if everybody will continue with their donations and give it to them.
So your day is Thursday?
Thursday, at five-thirty.
At five-thirty.
Uh huh. Is that better?
Okay. I know the police are willing to have a person in front, the police are behind y'all. My questions or things because of coronavirus, as far as face masks, as far as, you know, when the Chamber does their parade, one of the things they do, they have walkers by the foot. One of the issues to consider is to cross streets. If we can't block streets, right, cross streets, we don't have enough personnel. But you don't want some car to try to get across while y'all are trying to come down. I would think you might want to see if some of the non-riding people will be willing to handle a cross street for just a few minutes while y'all go by, and their job would be done.
Yes, we can make that happen.
And Jeff, do we still have enough masks to have giveaway on masks? You might want to get with Jeff about giving away masks, who I know you're going to give Ken. But we're trying to get masks for as many people out there also.
Okay.
And there's nothing better than a few masks for our family, if we can get more to.
Are those like repackaged individually, or?
Moved back.
Okay.
And we can technical pack and break it down into Ziploc bags, throw two or three of them, right?
Okay.
The other is, okay, you make it downtown, it's six o'clock or whatever, it's over.
How we gonna make it?
Man, how do they get back?
Well, I've kind of let everybody else kind of decide how they want to do that. I would say probably most of them are not going to want to ride back, and then they catch a ride or have that. However, they get their bikes to the high school, some may park them in a truck down by the mural. We just wanted to end at the mural to take a picture, and that's been.
So basically, not because we're riding back, they'll have a way to.
Some may be riding back, but if they would ride on the sidewalk, as if they were independently, not with a group.
Okay.
And then some, like, I mean, some may ride their bike to their home, depending on how far.
Okay.
We have, our ages are from like twenty to sixty, and it's not really one neighborhood in Bruton. It's a lot of, a lot of people, some people don't even know who have asked to join, so that's also wonderful in my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess we'd need a motion here.
Motion by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Broughton to approve the Witch's Ride on Thursday.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. I hope it doesn't rain.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the Witch's Ride is approved.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. I'll take care of you. Next item, there is a car show that's been going on for, the line's put up for sixteen, I think this will be the sixteenth year, and they would be using the parking lot at Camp 31 on Saturday, November the 7th. So it would just be, even though it's normally used by Camp 31, this is Camp 31 uses it also, but it's called Ribs and Rides, but that is a city parking lot. So if we want to approve it, I need a motion to approve that.
Sir.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, seconded by Counselor Barton to approve the Ribs and Rides Car Show at Camp 31 Parking Lot. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the car show is approved.
Next item is a report on the Chamber of Commerce Events, and I call on Dennis Bonner.
Mayor and Counselor, thank you for having us this afternoon. Just going to give a brief update of our remaining events. Unfortunately, COVID has canceled a lot of our events this year, but the next one that we're planning is Porches Fest, which will be November the 7th from 2 to 8. It'll be blocked off, the 600 block of Bevel and Evergreen Avenue. We have a total of nine porches, and along with the main stage, a total of ten. There's some local entertainments which will be performing, beginning at two at each porch. We're going to stagger them on Evergreen and Bevel. And then Tobacco Road, which is the main event, will be on the main stage of the Downing House, and that starts at six o'clock. So any of our local ones at about 5:30, 5:45 start, our main stage will be ready to go at six. We'll be having some food vendors there, about four or five of them. We do have some changes unfortunately due to COVID. There will be no children's section, no golf carts, unfortunately, carrying, picking up or carrying people from their vehicles to the festival and from the festival back in their cars. Just because we can't sanitize them, and we don't need to pack several people on the golf cart, so we will not be providing those. Also, a change is, we've asked all the musicians to not enter the homes that they're on, the porches, just to stay outside where they're performing due to COVID. The next event will be our holiday kickoff. That will be November 19th, starting at four, going to seven o'clock. All merchants will remain open late with sales and refreshments. Ms. Anne's, Toral Star will begin performing at the boardwalk. We don't know the time yet. She hasn't given us the time yet, but once she gives it to us, we will announce it and put it out. We've also offered our board members to help the businesses with their service of sitting at the door, handing out masks, hand sanitizers, and also to kind of not let it get overcrowded inside their stores. So we've offered that. Board is willing to do that for them if they ask. Some changes beginning due to COVID. Santa will not be available for pictures, like they usually are at the L House, but they can call in with appointments and get their pictures taken with Santa. And our last event will be the Christmas Parade, will be December the 11th, beginning at six o'clock, starting East Bruton and ending at the courthouse. Looking, we were talking about masks, like you just told her, all the walkers and everything. Everybody in the parade will be asked to wear masks, will be wearing masks, and we're hoping and will announce and recommend that everybody watching, both will be hopefully have on masks also. Santa will be riding on the fire truck, but again, due to COVID, will not be available to visit with the kids after the parade. And that's about it. We thank you, Mayor and Counselor, for supporting the Chamber this year and every year that we have events, and hopefully next year, cross our fingers, that we will be able to have a full event for the year. We thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate it, Dennis.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And it's really up to the hospital folks and doctors to come up with that back. Your future is in your own hands. Let's see. The next item is to approve the fiscal year 2021 holidays schedule.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, seconded by Counselor Barton to approve the fiscal year 2021 holiday schedule as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the holiday schedule is approved.
Next one is to approve the 2021 municipal arraignment and court dates.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, seconded by Counselor Watson to approve the 2021 municipal court arraignment and court dates. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Mayor Lovett?
Here.
Ordinance number 20-1026 is immediately introduced.
Motion to approve 20-1026.
Motion by Counselor Brown, seconded by Counselor Broughton to approve ordinance number 20-1026. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-1026 is introduced.
We have a motion to approve the second ordinance number 20-1026.
Motion by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Broughton to introduce ordinance number 20-1026. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-1026 is introduced.
We have a motion to approve the second ordinance number 20-1026.
Motion by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Broughton for immediate consideration of ordinance number 20-1026. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Mayor Lovett?
Here.
Ordinance number 20-1026 is immediately introduced.
Motion to approve 20-1026.
Motion by Counselor Brown, seconded by Counselor Watson to approve ordinance number 20-1026. Is there any discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the ordinance to, for a lease on the old City Hall. with the yellow in the middle, that's what we'll be doing, the, the bold yellow lines, and that's another reason the state won't do it, both the pink line and the big yellow line, the Navy within the next year is gonna build and overlay both of these runways and restripe them at no charge to the city. That's, that's in our agreement in our, in our lease. So if, if we can extend the life of this taxiway, it'll all match and it'll all be in good shape for quite a number of years. We've got a, there's a little green line down here, that's our new taxiway, so it's, it's freshly paved. So after all this is done, all asphalt and airfare will be in superb shape. But all we expect to be out, the worst case for the city would be about somewhere between $7 to $10,000 for this work, of getting several million dollars worth of improvements. And the CARE, and the CARES Act may extend, and it may not cost the city, but I'm, I'm here, I'm here to explain that, but ask for you, you guys to approve this resolution and application for the new grant.
That's resolution, resolution 20-1026.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, second by Counselor Barton, to approve resolution number 20-1026. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to approve the contract with Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC is approved.
Next item is to approve the renewal of our general obligation warrant credit line for $1,700,000 with Trustmark Bank. That's resolution 20-1026-2.
Motion to approve resolution 20-1026-2. Second.
Motion by Counselor Brown, second by Counselor Barton, to approve resolution number Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to renew the $1,700,000 credit line with Trustmark is approved.
Next item is to approve an appointment procedures resolution, resolution number 20-1026-3.
Motion to approve resolution number 20-1026-3.
Motion by Counselor Watson, second by Counselor Broughton, to approve the resolution Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to rescind the procedures of appointment resolution is approved.
Next item is to approve a lease of the parking lot at the rear of 1014 Douglas Avenue, resolution 20-1026-4. The building at 1012 Douglas Avenue, which is part of that parking lot, is owned by myself and Jackson Hines. And at one time, Hines really owned that whole row of buildings, but they're no longer owned buildings, but they, we ended up with the parking lot behind it, which is continually used and full most days with the food giveaway bank there and, and other things, but really doesn't have anything to do with us. So it's, it's to lease it for 30 years for a dollar to the, to the city, for the city to use or the public to use, for whoever wants to use it. That's resolution 20-1026-4.
Motion to approve resolution 20-1026-4.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Watson, second by Counselor Broughton, to approve resolution 20-1026-4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Broughton?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to lease the parking lot at the rear of 1014 Douglas Avenue is approved.
Be sure to tail aircross.